Okay, we'll open the meeting of May 26 with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of North Dakota, which is one nation under God, liberty and justice for all. We're gonna begin the meeting with a moment of silence and remember our armed services, people who served in the armed services. This meeting is being recorded and televised by the local cable company. I'd like a motion to approve bill and payroll warrants.
So moved, Dan?
Second, Brian.
Second by Brian, any discussion? Callers in favor, Dan?
Hi, yes.
Brandy?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Now a motion to accept correspondence in the read file.
So moved by Dan?
Second, Brian.
Any discussion? Justin?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. And tonight, we have budget review, the town meeting warrant and Article 2, and we also have a request for a line item transfer from Chief Hamlin. We'll take care of that first. I'd like a motion to act on the request of Chief Hamlin for a line item transfer.
So moved by Dan?
In the amount of $1,645.20 from line item 121, part-time records clerk to line item number 120 clerical. It's been answered by Brian. So any discussion? Okay, Brian?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. And now for the town meeting warrant, town meeting is right now scheduled for June 22, 2020. Frank, do you want to take over this discussion?
Sure. The, as you know, I sent out copies of the draft warrant and the budget, Article 2, and I just wanted to talk a little bit, starting with the Article 2 budget. The budget was prepared under the assumption that we would be offering no COLAs this year, and also under the assumption that we would reach an agreement for an assessment process for Whitman-Hanson and would have an assessment resulting from that agreement. As you know, the Board of Selectmen in Hanson has laid their meeting until July 20, and I don't know if they're going to be taking up a vote tonight on the assessment, but everything we do initially was predicated on an assessment using the statutory method and for new teachers. The, I'm just digging to get the assessment from Whitman-Hanson because I can't seem to find it on my worksheet, but the question that we have before us is two-fold. One, what are we going to do as it relates to the agreement with Whitman-Hanson? Because that makes a major difference in our assessment. And then the second question is, what are we going to do as it relates to the COLAs for those employees that did not get a contract this year and those non-union employees who do not have a contract? One of the worksheets that I sent you, and it's one printed on blue paper, simply shows what the increase in the budget would be if the board adopted a 2% COLA, which is something that was discussed at our last meeting. And certainly that, not while not being a huge amount of money, is significant. And there's a lot of concern on the part of employees of the town that they may be short shrifted on this based on what's happening at the region and the other community that we share the schools with. So, you know, I don't know if you want to get into that discussion first because it does have some bearing on our ultimate budget.
Decide on whether or not to do the 2% COLA first. Would someone like to make up, to put it up for discussion? Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
That we offer the 2% COLA. Randy?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second Dan.
Okay, discussion.
Want to go?
Any discussion? Anyone want to talk about this?
Yeah, I'll talk about it. Frank, I guess the question I have is, it all relates to, you're saying the increase in the budget, if we add the COLA, is around $165,000?
Yes.
Okay. The school, and all, I think it goes with the school assessment. That's 758, or 758,000 increase in the school budget. Is that with or without the four teachers?
The 758 is with the four teachers.
Okay, that being said, thank you very much for answering that. That being said, if we choose to go with that number, 758, change with that support teachers, and if the superintendent who came with an offer for a 50-50 and was able to drop our increased assessment from $500,000 to $200,000 by taking money from other areas, I say, why doesn't he continue to do that? And we take it off, and we only have to pay $558,000. And that way, that extra $200,000, we're under the levy limit, we can give our people the 2% increase like Hanson's getting and the teachers again. My thoughts.
Frank, did you find what you were looking for as far as the request from Hanson for the assessment?
No, I'm having trouble finding it. I'm having trouble with the entire exchange documents lately. It just seems like the search fields aren't working at all.
And of course, Kyle, if I may, last Friday, the Whitman-Hanson, I mean, the Hanson Board of Selectmen voted to put an $800,000 override on the town meeting warrant.
Okay, thank you. My understanding was that the, and Frank, I got a question for you. We had received an offer from the school committee when they did their assessment to use a 50-50 split this year, go to full statutory next year, use the money that Dan was talking about to, from E and D and from some other fund in order to reduce the assessment.
Right.
And I thought, I thought it was a, I'm not sure it was a $758,000 increase over last year, was it, if all that happened?
No, that's why I'm pulling that up now.
Randy, do you have any?
I can't find your sound bit.
Are we talking from our payment from last year?
Right now, the numbers that are showing are based, the increase is based on what last year's payment was. But if we go to the 15%, our number goes to 15...
364, right?
367, 391.
Okay.
I'm just lost, what question? What number are we talking about? Our increase from last year or?
Yes.
Well, if I plugged it in...
14390.
The, I can't read with my glasses. The 15156, that's in the current budget, is 758 over last year, and it's from a previous assessment of 14398. If we go to 15367, it's roughly 100, 207,000 more, and it's a 50-50 assessment. And I had thought I plugged that into the spreadsheet, but apparently I didn't. So let me pull it up right now.
Yeah, but Frank, why do we need to do a 50-50 if Hanson is going for an override? I assume it's to pay for the increase and the change in the school budget.
I think Hanson has to go for an override for any number in the school budget right now.
Well, then, then they should go for the full amount and get it taken care of this year. And if in fact, the superintendent can find monies to lower both Maya, ours, and Hanson's assessment, then he should continue to do that. So Hanson doesn't have to go for that much of an override, and we can lower ours and we can give our increase to our employees like the town and the school region is doing.
Well, I think, Dan, you can only cut so much before you start cutting staff. Is that what you're asking?
No, that is not what the superintendent said. He said to make it plausible for the 50-50, he would find money out of the E and D and some money someplace else, still get the four teachers, and be able to reduce hours down to $200,000.
They're taking out the E and D and circuit breaker.
Right. By doing that, he's able to lower the increase in our assessment for the 50-50 by $200,000. Let him continue to do that. It's not hurting the school system. He's found the money, continue to do that, lower our assessment and Hanson's override costs.
Dan, there's only so much money to find. They're taking another whack at it.
He found it.
Well, Dan, what he did is he committed money from his E and D account that is currently there, money that he's saving from other areas of the budget, including transportation and school services, and all of that is being used to reduce the amount of the assessment to the two towns.
So continue to do that.
Well, that, these numbers reflect that.
No, why wouldn't it come off the 758,000 that we have if we go with the full statutory method? And it would reduce Hanson's need to go for an $800,000 override, maybe a $600,000 override. I don't know. I don't know Hanson's numbers.
Danny, gets into the same problem of one-time money that we have every year. If the school starts using E and D or one-time money to solve their recurring expenses, the towns are going to be assessed for eventually.
Then why did he offer it? Why did he offer it?
Dan, the 7...
So he can get the four teachers and he could get the school committee reps to go with it. That's why he offered it.
The 758 represents our numbers with four teachers and a statutory assessment.
Right.
That's...
Like I said, if he can come up with monies to lower the amount for the 50-50, he should be able to come up with that same amount of money to lower our assessment so we can offer raises to our staff like everybody else does in Hanson and the school department, and it would lower Hanson's override. I mean, why not? He's the one that put those numbers out.
Right, Dan. He put those numbers out, and that was, that was what the school sent us to consider, those numbers, not, not numbers that he's gonna, not numbers he's gonna look at again because you asked him to look at it again.
No, no, those are numbers he put out so he could get the school committee, the towns of Whitman and Hanson both agree and pass his budget. That's all he cared about, getting his budget passed and not doing the 112. And he'd come up with that, taking that money, finding it, lowering the assessment to each town for the 50-50 project, and then the, right, so we would go with it and Hanson would go with it. Well, you know something? Now Hanson said they gotta go with an override anyway. So why not continue to do that?
They had to do an override anyway. I'm kind of lost here with what we're saying. I mean...
They're the ones that said they put an override on the ballot.
It was a lot simpler last week.
They voted that Friday.
They, they had, yeah, they had to, in preliminary talks about a deal, I think we were very clear that we would never be able to exceed 15-5. So, to make this manageable, everybody kind of kicked in, is gonna kind of kick in here, I guess. They, the schools have taken out a circuit breaker and E and D. I mean, they don't have that much money left in E and D.
Okay, now why are they doing that? Why did they suggest that?
Well, I would say to avoid a 112 budget, Dan, which would...
That's right.
And that's what everyone, I think, wants to do. If you don't want to do that, there's a problem for the, I mean, you might as well say you just don't care about education in this town.
No, no, you're wrong.
When not trying to avoid that situation.
Yeah, no.
Yeah.
Well, isn't, isn't that scenario already taking place because they pushed the town meeting into July? So it's, it's already a 112.
20 days, 20 days of a 112 budget at least.
Right. Hanson has pushed them into a 112 budget. And it's not a good thing for the school district by any means. And it should have tried to be avoided, and I do commend Jeff in the school committee for coming up with what money they did to make this. And I don't think it's so much being done at our benefit, it's being done at Hanson's benefit, because we know what we could do. We could say statutory. Well, we have said that, barring any changes tonight. But what that's going to do is send our school district to a 112.
It's gonna go to a 112 anyway because they're not gonna have their town meeting until after the first, the opening year.
Well, Dan, it'll go to a 112 anyway until July 20. If we force this issue, it'll go to a 112 probably through December until Desi takes over.
Well, you know my feelings on it.
But just, just for informational purposes, the, I was talking with Fred Small earlier today about the repercussions of what this would be, and they'll, you know, whatever side you fall on, the argument of this, there'll be at least 40 people losing their jobs at the district under this scenario, whether they can come back after the July meeting in Hanson, it's another matter, but it's about 40 people.
Just to be clear, Brian, the scenario you're talking about is if we were to okay 15156 to 35, the statutory method?
I actually don't know which number. Is that you talking about with the, with our extra kick into Hanson?
No.
15156 is straight statutory, right, Frank?
Yes.
That's the figure you put in?
Straight statutory.
Yeah. That's what that is.
Yeah, straight statutory with, with a 112 budget is 40 lost jobs.
Majority... And I think if I understand what Justin is saying, if we were to go with the 15156, that would mean that the 112 budget wouldn't be a 112 budget for a month until Hanson has his town meeting. It would likely be a 112 budget until December when the department takes over the schools. Is that what you're saying, Justin?
That's my best guess. It assumes actions by another town, so we really can't know, but...
Okay, what happens if Hanson doesn't pass their override?
I don't, we don't, we don't know. I don't know. I don't know, but that's not...
Really, it's not our...
It's not our fault, it's not our business to know. That's, that's their business.
As is, as is, Dan, we act first, so we have to...
As what?
As is, right now, we act first. We've got our town meeting before their override voting, before their town meeting.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Just to clarify, numbers for people watching at home, a straight statutory for us is 15156,000 and change.
Right.
Under this proposed agreement, we would pay an extra $211,000.
And change.
And change. So, we're not talking another $700,000. We'd be given $211,000 more to the school.
Right.
If we had continued to use the amendment, sorry, the agreement method that we had previously been using, our payment would have been $16.2 million. So we are still considerably, we do have a considerable savings entertaining this offer. So really, we are talking about a, and I don't like to use the word subsidy, but a benefit payment to Hanson of only $211,000 at this point. And that is because of what the work the superintendent did, finding money in circuit breaker and E and D. However, that being said, Dan, to go back to your point, I kind of caught up with what you were trying to say. So at this point, for us to try and save money, you need to remember, for every dollar, we only see 60 cents of that at this point. So for us to see considerable savings, you're talking, they would need to somehow come up with probably close to another $500,000 of money somewhere to, for us to see a savings of $169,000, $164,000.
If he maintains being able to save both Whitman and Hanson on the 50-50 split, if he continued to do that, Hanson would be, would be saving 100 and something thousand. So I mean, if he says he can do it just to get it passed, then he should be able to do it for the, for the, for the budget, for both towns. I mean, you don't put out something to get your budget passed, and then when, if it's not taken, you take it back. Didn't we do one-time money last year, 800 and something thousand dollars to match Hanson?
I don't think he's taking it. I don't understand what you mean by taking it back, Dan. This is the budget and...
He's finding money to offset the cost of each town. Us by $200,000 and whatever by Hanson.
It's no different than when they had taken out the E and D in the past.
They did it last year.
They did it last year.
Yeah, they, they've done it in the past. Then they stopped it because it's bad management. Now they have to do it again.
Well, they never actually stopped it, Dan.
Yeah, they did it last year and this year.
No, okay, there you go.
They're just running out of E and D to pull.
So I might add that the statutory and the 112, the 112 budget would be based on FY '20, just so we...
Yes.
Are all clear on, on the numbers that we're gonna go for. And what Randy mentioned about our savings, if we went with the process we always have been going with, and then we'd still save by going to this new method, and it was a couple hundred thousand, I think you said, that would be the number to give the raises to the employees of the town that Dan was speaking of. So I'm not... How much?
It's about $700,000. If we, if we had not changed the way the region assessed towns.
Yep, yep, right.
So remember, that $700,000 is shifting from us to Hanson. They're coming up with that money. That's why they need the override.
Right. But my point was, under this 50-50 plan, Randy said we'd be saving a couple hundred thousands. Was that correct, around that number?
About 700.
Yeah, we're still saving 700.
700. But, so then you'd, you'd have some money there, wouldn't you, for your COLA? For everybody?
That's money we hadn't planned, that's money we hadn't put into the budget. If we had put that into the budget, that'd be a whole different ballgame.
Right. And my, my whole point was, we originally, we really originally started talking about whether we were going to entertain the raises for the town employees. And while I do think that everybody in the town who has, for the most part, most of them have worked through this crisis when the majority of the citizens were stuck at home. So they, they kind of deserve some recognition and respect for what they've done. However, on the other side of the point is, some people are still out of work, haven't got their stimulus, might not even have their unemployment. So they're hurting, they're at the food pantry, they're struggling, and we're talking about giving raises. I mean, while I believe that they deserve them, I would be hard-pressed to fight that fight to the citizens that are out of work right now to 25 to 30% unemployment. I don't, I don't believe that in this crisis, anybody should get a raise.
It's no secret that I brought this up to the board a couple of months ago in a concern for where we were going and how we were going to be impacted. But a point was made pretty well to me last week in a discussion that we have entered into an agreement with one union for one year. The other contracts are out. If we were to treat all of the other unions the same way, we would be starting from a position of strength in negotiating a new three-year contract. And clearly, we would have taken the upper road to get there. And, you know, I, I empathize with the people that are struggling to pay their bills and their tax bills and their mortgage and their rent and utilities. But our people are pretty much in the same boat. They haven't been laid off. There's a ton of people that haven't been laid off. But I've noticed that just the cost of living in the last few months, buying food and providing for ourselves, has risen dramatically. New insurances come into effect July 1. I kind of think that there's some merit to talking about treating everyone unilaterally and putting our cards on the table for negotiating new contracts.
I have a question on that, Mr. Chairman. So just logistically, because we only have contracts with one union, if we agree to fund cost of living increases without a contract, can we do that?
What, what we would be doing is sending a message that we are, we recognize the cost of living issues, and we're prepared to negotiate on it, and we're going to set aside some money in the event that we can reach agreement. Because even if the board votes to do this and the town votes to fund it, we still have to enter into agreements with all of those union groups to make that happen. I suspect that would be less difficult now than it might have been in January.
Okay. You know, I've kind of lost track because you guys are all over the place. Do we have a motion on the floor to raise, raise the COLA?
There's a motion to fund the...
To fund the COLA. And the total, and the total cost for that is $165,000 approximately.
Correct.
Correct. 59 of which we have to pay already because, because of the agreement with the, with the fire. But the total is 165, correct?
Yeah.
And I think in our discussion last week, it was, it was brought up that we can probably take that 165 out of free cash, even though we know it's a one-time event, which would not raise the taxes for the other people in town, correct? Is there anything else that anyone needs to say that's important? Is there anything else that anyone needs to say that's important about deciding whether or not to take the hundred and sixty-five out of free cash and pay our employees the two percent cola for this year? And, you know, we also have to keep in mind, as I, I think somebody brought up, that, that the teachers' union is getting a raise, the town employees and Hanson's, Hanson are getting colas. This is a kind of a gesture in that, in the direction of treating everybody the same this year, a difficult year. Is there anyone that needs to talk more about this?
I would just like to, one point is, when we speak of free cash, where did that cash come from? It came from the citizens already.
Sure it did, sure it did. But they paid it already, Brian. It's not adding to the tax rate to take it now. They paid it already.
No, I didn't say it was.
We just, we just haven't spent it yet.
Right.
Yeah, it is, it is tax rate.
I have a question if I might.
Yes, Dan.
Kyle, I have another question.
Yep.
Frank, do we have, is, do we have that free cash or do we have to take that, eliminate something else to pay it? Do we have to lose a capital item that we may be paying on?
No, our current free cash position assumes that we're funding all of the capital articles that are on the warrant.
And there's still enough left over to go with a two percent cola?
Well, a two percent cola, it's, it's going to be
Hundred and sixty-five grand.
Over and above what we're projecting, a hundred and four thousand. And fifty-nine of that, I'm sorry, fifty, fifty-one of that will go to another large union and the balance is spread out all, over all the other employees, which is a total of fifty-four thousand four hundred. So when you, when you look at the numbers, a hundred and fifty would bring us to the funds.
Says here, one sixty-four, six eighty-nine for employees.
Right, but, but part of that's included in the, in the current budget calculation. The rest has to be added.
Fifty-nine thousand.
Fire departments already.
Right.
So, right now, our free cash position, assuming everything is voted the way it is, would be a million twenty-six thousand.
One question.
What should we do next year?
Yes, Brian.
What, what, how confident are you, Frank, in our revenue projections overall at this point?
I think they're reasonable. I think they're measured. I think they include the concerns we're addressing for immediate COVID costs that impact our revenue. I'm assuming that going forward, we would, in the following year, be level funded or better. If things turn even worse, then I don't know. That would have to be dealt with. This is consistent with what we experienced in two thousand eight?
And, and my, in my mind, giving off the cola, which I think is a good thing to do, is linked to our accepting the superintendent's hybrid assessment and budget that splits it at fifty-fifty and guarantees going to full statutory next year. I have a question to Frank about that. But I see the two, I see the two as joined in my mind. And it, last, last week, it appeared that we had, we have enough money, around two hundred thousand dollars, to take care of the difference between the full statutory method this year and the fifty-fifty split. And then basically what we'd be doing is we, yeah, we would, we would be helping Hanson out one more time rather than drawing a stark line in the sand saying statutory this year and that's it forever. I, I am, I'm not unhappy with doing that because what it means, and I'm echoing Randy here, is what it means is that the people being served by our educational system are going to be served in the best way that they can for next year. We won't have to worry about, I don't think, forty people losing their jobs. We'll have four new teachers. And remember that when we did the town survey a year ago, education was high on the list of things that people valued. And the value, and the, the quality of an educational system is something that brings people to a town and helps people in the town. So I, in my mind, I see the, the cola increase, the thing that we're going to be voting on pretty soon, I hope. And I'd be looking for actually an amendment to the fifteen-one fifty-six to fifteen-three something. I see those things as, as connected. And I see them as a good thing for us to do this year and, and a way to, to set a stage for whatever goes on in Hanson. And whatever goes on at, at Whitman-Hanson High School. That being said, I didn't mean to make a speech, but that, that being said, I'm looking at, if there's any, anything different that anyone wants to say about voting on whether or not to give a two percent cola to our employees this year. Hearing nothing. Let's vote on it. Justin?
Yes.
Dan? Dan?
Yeah.
You want to give, you want to give, you want to give the two percent? Okay. Randy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes too. So we've done that. Yes.
Read what this will result in. An article will be added to the warrant to see if the town will vote to appropriate one hundred and five thousand dollars to fund cost of living increases to be negotiated with union and non-union personnel or take any other action relative thereto.
Works for me.
But the source of the funding is free cash, correct?
Yes.
Okay. The question that's still out there, Frank, that I, before we go into discussing the schools' budget, we had asked that you have Michelle or Peter look over that agreement that the school department sent to us? Have they had a chance to get back to you?
I have not heard back from them, but it was a holiday weekend.
What I'm concerned about, and I think what some other people are concerned about, is that when the chairman of the school committee or the chairperson of the Hanson Board of Selectmen talk about the fifty-fifty arrangement as a one-year deal. There's two ways of taking a one-year deal. If I read, if I read that agreement, it means fifty-fifty this year, and next year it's both statutory and forever after, after that. If some, someone else could say one-year deal and say, well, that's our deal for this year, and next year we negotiate again. I'm not interested in negotiating.
No, and when I.
That's why I need the, I need the lawyers to chime in.
When I sent it to Peter, I, I specified that I would expect to see an acknowledgement that in future years, the statutory method shall be the sole method of assessment. I mean, we really need to spell it out. We can't go into this with any.
No. We're hoping that, we're hoping that it was spelled out already by all of those heads that worked on that agreement.
Well, it was for me, but for someone to say that they think it couldn't be negotiating later, we'd have to make it even more obvious.
Right, right.
I was pretty confident in the language myself, but I'm not a lawyer, so.
If, if we, if we were to vote the fifteen-three something tonight instead of the fifteen-one fifty-six, that's something that we would have voted tonight. However, it's something that we could change before our town meeting if we find out that things go awry at the other end.
Yes.
That's clear.
Worksheet until it's voted at town meeting.
Right. Which could, would someone like to make a motion to change the fifteen-one fifty-six to the.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, could you, do you have the other figure too?
I, I don't. I, I don't.
I have it, Kyle.
Randy, you've got it? Sure.
So to change the assessment number to fifteen million, three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars and seventy-five cents.
Well, it'll be three ninety-two because Article II is whole dollars.
Quarter could have just changed things.
But you really, could you give me that figure again? Fifteen thousand, three sixty-seven.
Fifteen million, three hundred and sixty-seven thousand.
Yep.
Three hundred and ninety-one dollars and seventy-five cents.
Okay, well, we'll call it, we'll call it three ninety-two.
Yeah.
So Justin, Justin made that motion even.
He told me to amend that line.
Okay, would someone like to second that?
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, now that's up for discussion.
I have a question.
Yes, Brian.
Yeah. If, if our board today votes this, this in and Hanson does not, what happens?
It becomes non-number.
Yeah, it's nothing. It's nothing. Then, then we, then we, I think the time, then the schools don't have a, they don't have a budget coming back. And they have to go, they would have to go to a double town meeting probably. The schools would have to.
So if we don't vote.
The schools would have to come back with another offer.
Ryan, it goes back, if, if you think back a while, it's been a long time since we've had the situation where Whitman and Hanson was. But the, under chapter seventy-one, the school assesses the town a number, or the towns. If those assessments are not accepted, the budget is rejected and you're back to square one. So if we vote that number and Hanson doesn't vote its, its appropriation number to meet that budget, budget's over. We had, we get back to zero. Budget doesn't pass unless both towns vote it.
Those are votes of town meeting though, not, not us tonight.
That's correct.
Okay.
And, and the thing to remember is that when we go to town meeting, if we're voting any number other than whatever the school's assessed, we are technically rejecting their budget. Now, in the past, they've gone back after the two towns have voted and adjusted their assessment to meet that number. But the argument I got from Christine Lynch last week was even that isn't necessarily a valid vote because you have to vote an assessment and until they assess, you don't have a number. So right now, we have a number based on Hanson's assessment, and that's the fifteen-three-six-seven. We vote our portion of it. Hanson then has to vote eleven, two fourteen, one seventy-six, seventy-nine. If they don't vote that, oh, that's rough. We're back to the drawing board.
And I think we know that if their override doesn't pass, their override is still slated for June twenty-seventh. We're going to know right then if they're going to be able to, if that doesn't pass, they can't get to that number, so. We will know actually before the first. And if the, if they don't pass and this budget gets rejected, we go down to what we paid last year. The fourteen-three ninety for however long is the budget's in a one-twelfth scenario.
And actually, even that would be adjusted because it's going to be a portion to statutory, statutory.
Right. Right, we, we could actually drop to thirteen-eight, I think, third, under the one-twelfth statutory.
A question, Kyle?
Other question.
Yes, I do.
Which one?
I acknowledge Brian.
Okay.
I didn't hear you. Yeah, Brian?
Okay. Frank, just for information, if this board votes to not approve that fifty-fifty, what happens to that cola money that we just voted on? Does it change anything?
They're, they're separate and independent votes.
So, because Kyle was mentioning that they were kind of connected.
They're connected, they're connected. They're connected up here, Brian.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure there was nothing in there that if this didn't happen, that wouldn't happen kind of thing. I wanted to make sure it was on the right page. So our finance committee is, is adamantly opposed to this plan.
Right.
I watched.
If we were to, if we were to vote this tonight, then their heads would be exploding.
Yeah, I wa, I watched it again before this meeting because I wanted to make sure I heard it correctly. I heard a lot of diatribes and, and.
Red and slander, slander maybe.
Let's just say I wasn't happy.
Frank has a law degree. There are terrorists on the Board of Selectmen, they're coming Board of Selectmen. Is that what you're talking about, Brian?
I am, I am. Talking about our town administrator and his dereliction of duty and there were a lot of threats thrown out and accusations that I find offensive. But that being said.
And if we were to vote, if we were, I'm sorry, Brian, but if we were to vote the fifteen-three-six-seven tonight, that wouldn't really diminish that kind of conversation on the part of the finance.
Probably not, probably not. However, I, I agree with their philosophy of the finances. And we far too long have been paying more than our fair share. And it troubles me philosophically to be doing it anymore after we know what's going on. And I understand how devastating it would be to the region. So that's going to be a personal conflict for me.
Right.
But I, I just wanted to let you know that that's how I feel.
Thank you, Brian. And Brian, I, I really don't feel differently. I don't really feel differently about the, the, the number of years that for one reason or another, we have been subsidizing Hanson without, without, without knowing it because we weren't informed of it. I mean, that, that bothers, that bothers me a lot. It bothers me a lot, especially when we hear now what bad people we are because we want to stop. On the other hand, I've been, I personally have been involved in education all my life. I've spent a lot of time on, on the school committee. I would, I, it, it is not going to bother me to give them a boost one more year, just one more year this year in order to get us past this situation as far as the budget is concerned for the schools for this year. That's where I'm coming.
And it, those forty positions, they could be lost. I don't know the exact numbers, but a good portion of those are going to be people working in Whitman schools, so it's going to directly affect our Whitman citizens and their children, so. It has to be a balance, I guess, and it's a very difficult personal decision for me, so. But I, I understand everybody's position on it.
Thanks, Brian. I, 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 I hear you. I hear you perfectly. Anyone else? Justin and then Randy?
Just to follow up on Brian, forty positions, I think there's only about forty-five teachers at Whitman Middle, so it's a significant percentage of the staff of the district. And not only are they a lot of, you know, Whitman teachers, there are a lot of Whitman citizens, little Whitman residents. I think the school's the biggest employer in both the towns of Whitman and Hanson.
Randy?
Obviously, I'm, I've kind of been in the trenches of this for a while, and I agree with you, Brian. We, we do have a, you know, financial responsibility here. And then you wrestle with the, the moral responsibility we have in, in keeping our kids, you know, current and competitive. And for me, I'm leaning towards one more time to make sure the kids don't suffer. But I, I do want to just speak real quick on, on this, you know, why we're helping Hanson out again and, and kind of relating to the finance committee comments last week. To me, it was a clear and obvious campaign stunt from a person who's, who's taking soundbites and trying to use them in her own benefit. Could we say that something went awry here? Absolutely. I think I've said that at several meetings along the way. There were obvious missteps, but I wholeheartedly believe there was more misunderstanding than missteps. This would, the baseline of knowledge that we have have on the statutory method right now is far different than what what it was in twenty sixteen and seventeen. I mean, we have the chair of the finance committee, the current sitting chair, who was on that regional agreement committee. Dan, you were on that. There were very smart, intelligent people on that, that this, nobody really knew this issue. I do not think this was ever a orchestrated event to keep these schools underfunded. I think this was a mistake and and they're clear and obvious, some people, and personally, my mind is is people within the the previous administration at the school level. But to to say anybody should have known about this, no. This was definitely a type of thing where information was not processed correctly. Heck, even the state could not tell us, DESI itself had it wrong. When when I called, asked what method we were using, DESI had that wrong. So to sit there and call somebody terrorist i- is just, i- it is what it is, it's clear and obvious. It's a campaign stunt. And it it's really disheartening of a group of people, not only on this board, the Hanson Board of Selectmen and the school committee that is trying to do the right thing by their towns and by the kids in the district.
Thank you, Randy. Anyone else? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to change line one seventy five from fifteen, one fifty six, something to fifteen, three sixty seven, three ninety two. Okay, roll call, vote. Dan.
Me?
Yes.
No.
Brian?
No.
Justin?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, too. So it'll be recorded, it's a three to two vote. And Frank, you'll adjust the, you'll adjust that.
I already have.
Before it gets over to the finance committee. And and please, as soon as we hear something from, it's gonna make, I know, three of us feel a lot better, as soon as we hear something from Peter and Michelle about about what that agreement really means.
Right, because we're not even gonna insert that language into the warrant until we have our council's approval for it.
Okay.
And I I will follow up tomorrow morning for it. I do want to note that finance committee has gone through most of the articles that are on the warrant and the recommendations are in your copies for those that they did look at. Again, this is a draft worksheet, so there are some corrections that need to be made in punctuation and location. But we're still hostage in terms of where and when to hold the town meeting. Our plan is to hold it June twenty second at the high school. I did speak to a state rep Friday. I did ask her to file legislation to allow us to hold the meeting at the high school. And the the problem with it is the language in chapter thirty nine says to be held within the geographic boundaries of the town. And unfortunately, the high school is entirely in Hanson. There is legislation pending, it's been pending since May four to allow communities to go outside their boundaries if a large enough space is needed to safely conduct a town meeting. If we can't resolve that, I I think we may be facing the reality of, again, delaying town meeting. I'm on top of it.
Is it this? Is it the street address, Whitman, the address?
The street address is Whitman, but with what we have to deal with in our town meeting this year, I wouldn't want to split those hairs.
It's a long driveway.
Yeah, the problem is the driveway is entirely in Hanson.
But the mailing address is Whitman.
I I use that argument.
The rea- the reason that the reason to try to do it on the twenty second is that then we won't have to be faced with a one twelve budget in the town of Whitman. However, the twenty the twenty second still might be, you know, it's at the end of phase one before we go into phase two, I think, as far as the state's concerned. That's still cutting it pretty close.
It is.
There is, there are some dangers involved in in just having it at all, whether we're allowed to or not, so. Remember, I'm sure you saw, or did you see Don Varley's sharing an article by the Plymouth, was it the Plymouth Town Clerk?
Plymouth Town Clerk quit.
Yeah.
Retired.
Pardon? Quit?
He retired in protest.
Yeah, concerned concerned about the safety issues around holding town meetings and elections.
How about under the lights at the middle school?
Under the lights.
Under the lights at the middle school. Put all the chairs out in the outfield.
Well, we can leave that up to the town clerk. Frank is still trying to work out the thing with the high school. I must, I have a personal problem with the high school myself, I've I've mentioned this to Frank. I'm I'm one of those people that's so compromised because of medications that I'm I'm not supposed to go out. So going to town, going to town meeting is going to be an issue for me. Frank says that they can set up separate rooms for people who are like me.
We're rent to trouble.
Yeah. So I I I'm still up in the air on on whether I can attend town meeting or not, whether my doctor will allow me.
We can put you in one of the kindergarten rooms.
I'd feel right at home.
Luckily, the high school has enough technology to.
Even though, even though I'm so old, I never went to kindergarten.
You did.
That's probably why I'm behind, that's why I'm still behind.
I went for one day.
Yeah.
That's a story for the future.
No such thing as kindergarten in the forties.
Is now, we had, we had at least one other issue left over from last week, and that was the the senior program, have we done any more thinking about that? Frank, have you?
I would just like to make it clear why I've made the recommendation I've made. The majority of the workers are in two areas. The library and the senior center. We will not be putting people in the senior center for the foreseeable future, certainly not before Labor Day and probably not after Labor Day. We have similar concerns at the library. And this is where many of those workers operate. The director is frustrated because there's a hiring process each year that's somewhat lengthy and involves sitting and meeting with each volunteer, completing work forms, abatement forms in in a whole, a whole number of things. It's it's probably a twenty to twenty five minute process per volunteer. And we don't know when we're gonna put them to work. I just I I look at it as a questionable situation and I don't think it's in our best interest to run that program right now. But again, I'm, it's just my opinion.
Frank, what happens if the librarian starts her process now and see who's interested? And then if, when she gets enough, she can call them when they they're needed.
Dan, we're not gonna have anyone in the library till at least Labor Day. The employees that are there are gonna be handling the books that are being checked out and dropped off. There's a process set up in there so that there's no interaction between the public and the employees, no physical interaction.
Do you think that the librarians will be doing that work?
Yes.
We need to talk to some of the volunteers.
We're not gonna bring the volunteers in there, Dan, they're all elderly.
Not what I meant. The ones that worked there in the past.
Frank, Frank, is that is that reflected in this, in the budget documents we have? Your thoughts about the pro- no?
No, it's it's budget neutral, it's gonna be an abatement.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry that I, I'm sorry that I brought it up. Because it's not something that, it's not something that we need to talk about tonight. Are there any other issues that are concerns that people have after looking over Article Two or the warrant?
Yes, I have a question on two of them, Frank.
Sure.
Article thirty was the client, was the cable?
Yes.
I I'm, I can remember when I went to one of the meetings they asked me to go to. Their concern was the amount of money that you have listed at two nineteen, two, three twenty two and sixty eight cents. That's the present amount that's in that account now or usual?
That's what's in there now.
What's in there now, because I, because I told Eric, if in fact as town meeting has been postponed, if that increases, you need to talk to Frank to find out what the exact number is.
Dan, that's not gonna increase again unless we meet in August.
Okay.
Just gotta pay me uh, in mid April.
Okay. And then my my second question was Article thirty three on the zoning bylaw change for the flood plains.
Yes.
The planning board looked at this?
The planning board is holding a public hearing on June either June first or June seventh.
I know they're meeting tomorrow, I believe, because I gave a copy of what this article was to my daughter in law, who's on the planning board for her to look at over because this is above my pay grade.
They've had it, they have to hold a hearing.
Oh, yeah, they have it?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't know if they had it or not, just a question, that's all. If they're aware of it.
Yeah.
Does anyone else, anyone else have any questions about the the town, either the town meeting warrant or Article Two?
Justin does.
Justin, I'm sorry.
I, yeah, I just wanted to give Lisa an opportunity to talk about Article Six. It's the Community Preservation Act article. I know we we spoke about this at our selectments meeting months ago, it was in person, so I don't know when. And settled on, I believe, recommending a one percent tax levy, but Lisa could probably explain it a little better than than I could.
Yeah. The Community Preservation Act that we have on the warrant poses a one percent surcharge on property tax. And that is after a one hundred thousand exemption that they take off the value of the property. So the value of your property is is three hundred and eighty thousand, they minus a hundred thousand off of that. And then they assess the one percent on the two hundred and eighty thousand. So basically, the CPA surcharge would be twenty eight dollars. And that is per year, that's annual, so it would be billed twice a year, it would be fourteen dollars on each bill. So and it is separate, it's broken out separately on a real estate tax bill. It will say CPA and it shows that amount going directly to the CPA. And then once we adopt it, it then needs to go to for a ballot vote which we hope to put on the November election as historically and traditionally community preservation acts have passed through presidential elections because of the amount of voters and turnout. And that's what we have at the process. The governor has still, there hasn't been any change to the twenty million dollars that he has dedicated to that fund in the FY twenty one budget. We've heard, so there's no danger of the Community Preservation Act going away. Real estate transactions, although slowed down, are still happening, so money is still being put from the registry into the trust fund through every single real estate transaction that happens in the town of Whitman. So we are, in Whitman, we're still contributing to this trust fund, yet we're not benefiting from it because we haven't adopted the Community Preservation Act. So it's money that we are losing, so I really recommend that still support this and go forward with this because ultimately, it's gonna allow us really to do a lot of things that we haven't been able to do in the past. Like upgrade our playground equipment, upgrade our pool and equipment to run the pool. It will help out with also keeping up the the park in general and then any historic buildings, it will help with that. There's a lot of things that we could do with that money.
And if I could just add to that, we also included language on income exemptions. So anybody who qualifies as low income or moderate income seniors don't actually have to pay this fourteen or to twenty eight dollar surcharge. And for the town of Whitman, I just looked up CPA's website. A moderate income senior in Whitman is an individual making sixty six thousand dollars. So if you make less than that, is an individual or seventy six thousand is a couple.
Right, okay.
Thank you, Justin. So anything else that anyone has in response to Article Two or the town meeting warrant? Yes, Randy?
Just Article eighteen, Frank, that that's for the online licensing and to go digital as per the budget override committee's recommendation and Mr. Madden's recommendation, okay, thank you.
One other thing I I should mention as it relates to budget. Last Thursday, I participated in a Zoom meeting with the Plymouth County towns and Plymouth County Commissioner Dan Pallada to review the COVID nineteen fund that Plymouth County will be admitting ninety one million dollars. It'll be in either three or four phases. And the first one has just started. The the interesting thing about this is that the towns in Plymouth County are all included. But the regional governments, such as schools and districts, are not. So I had a conversation today with the Whitman Hanson Superintendent. And I'm still trying to reach the South Shore Superintendent because any any funds that come to Whitman and to Hanson, for that matter, are directed to the towns and we have to determine how to also identify and support the costs for the regions. So it's it's gonna be a little more complicated than I originally expected it to be. But we're gonna work together, I'm gonna create a a Google spreadsheet that everyone the two, the two towns and the regions can use to reflect their costs so we can figure out how to fairly allocate that money. It is a significant amount of money, but it goes really fast when you look at some of the expenses that we're going to be covering at the school level. Things like.
Norfolk Aggie, right?
Not Norfolk Aggie, they're not a member of our region.
Really?
It's just South Shore Voke and Whitman Hanson. And there's been a lot of money spent and contemplated spending on electronics and technology for continuing education. A whole bunch of Chromebooks and other things that are going to be needed as well as network support and software. So that money's gonna go pretty fast. We'll keep an eye on it and as we get information, we'll bring it forward for the boards to be aware of what's going on.
Thank you, Frank. So Frank, is it our usual process to 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 vote this warrant and Article Two?
Yes, I will have to update based on the votes taken tonight.
Right.
And I would suggest that we vote the warrant at our next meeting.
And the next meeting is when, if you could remind me?
The fifth, I believe.
Ninth, June ninth?
June ninth.
June ninth, okay.
Let me think, twenty days. Yep.
June ninth. And that's
Fine.
That's how many days it's twenty seven minus nine, twenty two days to the town meeting.
Correct.
No, twenty, no, the town meeting is the twenty. No, the town meeting is the 22nd. So we'll be voting this, we'll be voting this only, you know.
I thought we were meeting sooner. I thought we had a meeting planned for June 2nd.
Next week? You know, I don't recall. Isn't it, does I?
I thought we had talked about that for voting year-end transfers and possibly if it was necessary.
I only have the 9th and the 30th, as well as town meeting on the 22nd.
Okay. I suppose we're not at the meet to sign the warrant. You've provided me with the information that's needed. If.
You could just let us know when it's ready to be signed. Maybe it could be signed within the next day or two.
Yes.
And part of why we met today was to have this information out there.
Right.
Does that suit everybody?
The only thing I'd like to see is the language on the school amendment and its approval through our council. But apart from that, I'm comfortable.
Okay, we don't want to, I don't know, do we want to hold this up while we wait for them to answer us, though? In other words, if there's, if there's a change, if there's something that makes this a bad move, what we did tonight, then we could, we can alter it or amend it on town hall floor when we go to town meeting.
True. But I would think we should be, I'm sure it's just everything bottled up, and Peter may be doing research on it because Nancy had this information previously. We should be able to align it tomorrow.
Okay, okay, because I'd like to get this out as soon as we, as soon as we can so that people have it in their, in their possession as we, as we look forward.
Right.
And cross your fingers for June 22nd. But the next meeting, our next meeting is on June 9th.
Okay.
Anything else? Anything else that anyone has?
Actually.
Yes, Justin?
Just a question, I guess, on June 22nd. If Hanson's meeting is not until July 20th, and the schools are going to go to a 112 budget, at least for the month of July anyway.
Right.
I think our town could handle the 112 budget as set up by DOR if we need to. I don't think it's a, it's not ideal, but it's not a terrible situation to put the rest of the departments in a 112, given the approval of this board, I think, the finance committee, and then the DOR.
Well, actually, the finance committee isn't involved in the 112.
Okay.
Board of Selectmen and the Director of Accounts have to approve the 112 budget.
Director of Accounts. So what would the impact be on the town departments if that were to happen, apart from the schools, which are already going into that scenario?
It would be fairly minimal, but any, any spending we claim for the first month of the year or the first two months of the year would be sidelined. And the other important issue is if we don't have a town meeting, we don't have a MAPS, a zoning flood zone plane adopted. And the feds have been extraordinarily reluctant to extend that deadline. And if we don't meet the deadline, people who own property in Whitman that's in a flood zone will not be able to purchase flood insurance.
So we'll do all we can to meet on the 22nd, in other words.
Yeah, there are, there are key issues that should be voted at that meeting.
Okay. So we'll see people on the night. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion by Dan.
Second by Brian. Second by Brian. Okay. Justin, do you have? Dan?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yeah.
Brian? Thank you, Brian. And I'll vote yes, too. We're out.
Yes, yes.
We're out.
Thank you, Will. Thank you.
Thank you. Wash your hands. Wash your hands.